Hello and welcome to a Tuesday in nine oh five roundup with me Roland Tanner.
I am Joel McLeod.
And this is going to be our last episode for a little while. We're going to take a short break over the summer month, month and a bit, maybe. I don't know. Where we'll take our break as we did last year and we'll probably be running some highlights of our episodes from the last year during that time. And we'll be back in plenty of time for all the fun of the municipal election that is coming up. And I know, I think there could be some fun stories there actually. Before, before, before the nominations close, I think we'll be seeing some interesting faces entering the race across the nine oh five region.
I hope so. I hope that I hope we see a little bit more of an attitude for change. You know, so far it's been kind of a, I think people have kind of laid low because of the provincial election. People want to see how that ended off. And now hopefully people are looking at their support and they're looking, they're going to be starting to throw their hats. They're going to, I hope we see a few lively contests throughout the region.
Certainly some lively things going on in council chambers, in a number of council chambers. And we're not going to talk about that today, but, but because we've covered them all several times before. But from Hamilton to Brampton and a whole bunch of cities in between, there's a lot of fun things. So you would think that that would carry over into the election. So we'll see. But today we're going to talk about a few other stories that all strongly affect nine oh five region in one way or another. And starting off with Joel, you noticed a, a story about rather than house prices, rental prices across our region.
Well, giving credit where it's due, today on insaga.ca, Jean Pereira wrote a column or sorry, an article that's seeing basically nine oh five rental pricing are jumping for the really incredibly for the, in three years, last three years. To put that in perspective, in Burlington, pretty much rental has increased by nineteen, nineteen percent, almost twenty percent, nineteen point eight percent. And that's, that's incredible. A lot of, you know, that's been all through the nine oh five, through the GTA, that we're seeing these housing, I'm sorry, these rental markups going up. And this is at the same time that we're seeing housing pricing, like the, the housing bids are plummeting. People are finally starting to, that housing market seems to be really plateauing, if not cooling off. And so we're starting to see the housing prices come down and rentals going up. And it's a strange, I mean, we're, we're not economists on this, but it's one of those things that you just look at and you say, this can't be good. You know, there, there, there are people who rent for a variety of reasons. Part of it was they're looking to get into the housing market and maybe we'll start seeing that in the coming months. Perhaps we'll wait and see. But there's, there's so many, I mean, those housing prices still haven't come down enough. And it's, you know, so there are people who are still just maybe holding on to rental spots before they, before they put a bid on, on their housing. I view it as kind of confirmation, but we suspected the last time we talked about housing prices, which was a few weeks ago, that we might be entering into a bit of a problem with a part of the accommodation of the inflation that we're seeing as well as the falling housing prices. That the plan to increase our supply in the nine oh five in Ontario in general may not pan out as planned. Yeah.
Yeah. The, I mean, the plan such as for increasing supply as, as envisioned, as envisioned, envisaged. I think I'm saying two different words there. Envisaged by the PC party is just make it easy to build, which is fine. But that, that's, it's a very blunt instrument. It's just like, let the builders do what the builders do. As we've said, well, as we've said, as many other people more informed than us have said, you know, that isn't enough. There, that, you know, it's a particular kind of housing that, that we have a chronic shortage of. And that is actually that, that kind of first, from first homes to rental accommodation, you know, rental accommodation in particular. It's already, there's already a shortage, you know? I mean, renting somewhere in Burlington is, is not easy at the best of times. If you suddenly take, you know, you decrease the number of people willing to move out, who would normally be kind of moving up the chain or whatever into, into buying a house. And now they're not going to do that for a year or two, maybe for, because interest rates have gone up or whatever. Well, now you've got a real rental accommodation problem. I mean, I guess ultimately over a long term, it might make being a landlord more attractive, which it hasn't been a very attractive proposition for decades.
That's, that the problem is again, it comes down to a supply issue. There's not, you, you might be very attractive if you're a potential landlord to say, well, I'd love to build a few units and rent them out to people and start making my money back that way over the long term. The problem as I, as I saw it, I kind of still do is inflation is causing the cost of building supplies to rise. And the profit margin on, on either flipping that unit or, or making your money back on renting is starting to dwindle an awful lot. Like it, the cost of, of building something is just rising and rising and rising. And if I was a, I was a developer, I'm looking at this and saying, yeah, am I going to build a gigantic tower that, you know, that's going to cost me far more than I anticipated? And I can't, I can't sell those units for, you know, two, three, four times the asking price, because the demand's not there. It's, what I'm saying is basically, I don't think the free market is going to solve this one for the free market alone, which is, yeah, it's a, it's a real, it's a real problem.
And, you know, it's, it's, it's one of the strange moments where I, where I mentioned Stephen Harper and mentioned him in a way as kind of doing a kind of sort of good thing when we had the recession in 2008. Now he was forced into it and it wasn't his natural inclination and it was, but basically massive government intervention and spending as a way to offset a recession. Oh, increased interest rates, just the general effects of COVID. I mean, I guess they haven't put us into a recession yet, but certainly when you see house prices going down. I mean, there's a whole load of factors at the moment that we're seeing. One way to deal with that would be large scale government investment in, in, in house building for rental specifically aimed at lower income people, people who, who want to rent short term, long term, whatever. And because that, you know, the rental housing supply in Ontario is, is, is aging, you know? I mean, you, you, there's very little new rental accommodation built. And so, you know, this is just a problem. It's already a problem. It's just going to get worse. And actually, I mean, again, I'm kind of repeating myself from previous episodes. I unusually for someone who rents and who is not of a right wing persuasion, have serious questions to ask about rent control. Because, you know, if someone's renting out something, they will get their money one way or the other. You know, you're, you're, you can't, either it's a free market or it isn't either allowed to set their rents or they aren't. If you say, okay, anybody who's living there for more than a few years, you can't increase their rent more than whatever it is, two percent, which is now four percent lower than inflation. Well, that means they have to get their money when someone does move out, then they have to jack the price up more than they otherwise would have done. So that they've got some kind of safety net in place for, you know, if this person stays in this, this flat for 20 years, we're not going to get completely screwed. So I just don't, I, I think, I mean, I know I am.
Well, the, the solution, the solution to this is going to be a very, it's, it's a, it's a complex situation. It's going to need a variety of different tools and, and regulations and, and funding to, to solve. And I, my worry is that this government, as we saw in the, the previous term, A does not think big and two, does not want to be bold in its endeavors. They will do the bare minimum. That's why they, they said, okay, our, our big plan is we're just going to take off all the red tape on housing development. And we're going to let builders build, build, build. Well, here we have a situation where they, they're going to do that. It's going to happen. I don't think the builders are going to sit there and say, I don't really want to build right now. I'll wait until after the recession and then I'll start building. And we're still going to be, we're going to be in a worse situation often in terms of the housing supply. Cause there'll be more people who are in dire straits and in need of good living conditions. And it's just not going to be there. And even instead of really start saying, oh, let's build, it'll be years, months, years until those accommodations are, are up and, up and running. So yeah, this is something that it's going to require a lot of intervention now. And a little, and I think it has to come from the provincial government, but I'm not sure it's going to, I'm not sure it's going to happen that way.
No, no, I mean, it, it won't. It just, it's not their style, you know?
No, it's not. Yeah. Well, you know what? Let's take a, a break there for, for our sponsor and we'll come back with another fascinating story from the nine oh five. And we're back. So Roland, we have Halton Regional Chair is, is finally starting to heat up that, that race.
Yeah, it is. This is, it's everything that's old is new again. We've talked a lot about new faces on councils recently. Maybe this is the exception that proves the rule. Gary Carr, who has been, oh, when did he become Regional Chair? I mean, two thousand eight, something, two thousand ten. I know. This is a good, long time since Joyce Savileen, I think, was his predecessor as Chair. She's been gone a long, good, good while. So there were widespread rumors that Gary Carr was going to retire. And to say, I mean, Jane McKenna, Burlington's former MPP threw her hat into the ring to, you know, resign from.
Yeah. She resigned from her position as MPP with the intention of running for Regional Chair.
Yeah. And we kind of, a lot of people felt that this, like, oh, well, you know, Gary's kind of tipped the nod or whatever. And, and she's, you know, Gary Carr was, was formerly a PC MPP, albeit he ceased to be a PC MPP under somewhat of a cloud back in the day. As, uh, was he speaker or deputy speaker? Anyway.
Speaker.
There, there was, uh, he got in trouble with his own party and, and that kind of ended his career there. But, um, so he, he, he has a, you know, he's, he's, he's nobody's PC toady, you know? He's, he, he has, he's, I will say this, even though he's blocked me on Twitter, I don't hold it against him. I will say that he is his own person and that's fair enough to say. And I was also say, apparently he used to play hockey. Did you know that?
No.
He didn't. He must have been President Hall. Every time you hear him speak, he mentions that he used to play hockey. I think he was in the minor leagues or something in the, anyway, anyway, I'm just kidding. If you're listening, Gary, I apologize. I'm just pulling your leg. However, having widely rumored that he wasn't going to run again, he's running again. And, um, you know, far from kind of stepping aside to help another PC politician take the chair. He's going to fight it out with Jane McKenna. And you know what? I, I suspect, well, I know, you know, it's, it's not the most exciting battle. I mean, I, I would be happy to see a fresh face at Halton Region personally.
I would just say it's a job that I don't think anybody wants, because like last election, Gary ran unopposed as well.
The, the, yeah, there technically was some, oh blimey, I've, Anne Marston ran.
Okay.
Anne Marston is, is a frequent flyer, so to speak, in municipal elections in Halton and Burlington.
Well, either way, I mean, that, but the, the point of it's like, there is, it's, it's not a position that draws a lot of attention. There's not, you know, there's not a lot of Regional Chair debates that, that happen through it all. And so this one, this one might change though a bit, because I think, I think his, his declaring today that he was going to run for the Regional Chair has really thrown a wrench into Jane McKenna's campaign plans, because let's face it, she was at the, for a good chunk of the, of the while, she was probably going to run unopposed. People are like, nobody was really itching that they wanted to be Regional Chair. It's not a glamorous elected position. I mean, just the name Regional Chair is high. It's not one of those, ooh, yes.
It should be higher profile than it is. And I mean, it's, I, I kind of find it, you know, where that, that they, they are spending billions of dollars. They have more power than the municipal governments.
If, if he, if he pisses off the trash collectors, yeah, you're going to know who the Regional Chair is real fast. Actually, no, here's, here's the thing. He probably wouldn't, because I guarantee you, if, if, that's hypothetically, there's, there's not going to be one that, not, not happening. But if the trash, if the, the waste collectors in Halton Region, the people who pick up your garbage, if they went on strike for whatever reason, whatever the, the, the issue, the reason was, I guarantee you, his, the Regional Chair's office will not get a phone call. It will be every mayor, it'll be Burton, Meadward, whoever was up in the Halton Hills. Bob or Gork Rance is going to be getting feeling phone calls up the yin yang, saying, hey, you got to settle with the trashies. And it'd be like, that's not, that's not their call. I mean, like they said at the regional table, they're on the, they're at the regional council. But, you know, it's the chair who's going to probably be cheerleading that, that debate. And there's other things like that, that, you know, you think about, but it's, it's a.
I mean, they make big decisions. It's just that no one in the public pays attention, you know? We, we don't talk about it very much. It's, it's difficult. I mean, I remember, you know, in two thousand eighteen ish, Halton had a budget item for rebuilding one of the bridges on Highway five. So this is in for anybody not from Burlington and Oakville, Highway five kind of goes to the north of those two towns. And, uh, yeah, that was a billion dollar item, billion dollars to spend on, on rebuilding a road and for widening and things like that. And it's like, you know, and it was, you know, the, the decision making was like, well, you know, we'll reduce the usual stuff, reduce congestion, we'll make it wider. Well, Highway five is already a horrible road. And I think anybody can say they enjoy driving along Highway five. You know, it's a mixture of strip malls and just, you know, it's about, I don't know how many lanes it is wide, six lanes certainly most likely. And it's like, are you sure a billion dollars on, on a bridge is, is the best use of money? You know, imagine what you could do with a billion dollars put into transit. I mean, I couldn't believe the kind of numbers involved in this single damn bridge. But of course, no one's paying attention and nobody really cares. Bridges, whatever, you know, it's, it's not exciting. It drains and it's.
So here's the thing, do you think, I mean, I suspect this, this race will heat up a bit, because again, Jane McKenna thought that it was going to be a, a cakewalk. She would just walk into this and lend a plum, six figure job again. Or do we think, uh, that we're going to see a little bit of debate over this? Like, we're actually going to see, because there are, there are two high profile numbers. And I, I bring that up because things like this, like now you actually have to debate, actually seriously debate and say like, why, why wouldn't we spend money to work on our regional transit plan? Why wouldn't we work on, uh, on, on, you know, on better, better transit infrastructure, things of that nature to help us get around, uh, between the, this towns?
There, there were huge things which should, so right now in Halton, transit is a responsibility of the cities, which is stupid. As a result, it's almost impossible. It's not almost impossible. It's far more difficult than makes any kind of logical sense to get a bus from Burlington to Oakville, let alone a bus from Burlington to Milton. You can't really do it.
There are reasons for that. I mean, there, there's, I know for a fact that it's because you have, you cannot drive. You have one bus transit system can legally cannot pick up the transit riders in another city. You can drop people off there, but you can't pick them up there.
Well, that, that's a law that needs to change.
That's, that's, that's at the provincial level. Well, I know, I know for a fact that's, now, I would argue it would be something like for a regional chair to go to the province and say, no, 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 we want to take, or have an agreement maybe with all the, the top four mayor, say, no, no, we're going to create. We, we're going to upload all the transit responsibilities to the Halton Region.
They, they could campaign for that and I think they should. I, I know that Maryam Meadward was talking about that in two thousand eighteen and because she, she mentioned it to me and I thought it was a great, I would have a hundred percent agree with her. Transit makes no sense at, you know, if you've got the two levels, if you've got regional and you've got lower level municipalities. It may, you know, what sense would it make for Hamilton to have five transit systems rather than one Hamilton wide regional transit? You know, it, it, it's ludicrous, you know? And then if the law says you can't pick up people in, in, I mean, that's, it's crazy. We're, we're meant to be designing, you know, and lots of great things have happened in transit in the last decade or so, under multiple governments of multiple different parties. I fully admit.
I, I, I think we're just, we're getting off, off topic here, but like going back to the, the race between Jane and Gary. Like these are ideas I would hope would come forward. Like we'd actually have a campaign of ideas.
Yeah. I mean, I would be surprised if I see that. Well, that, you know, I, I would be willing to bet that a Gary Carr might have stepped aside for a different person, you know? It says, I suspect, I suspect it says something about how Jane McKenna is viewed that Gary Carr is like, it's not bad.
I'm, I'm coming back for another four years. Yeah. And like, that's just, that's so sad, because you know, we just, you and I had a kind of a good debate or a good discussion about what could happen in the region that would really benefit people. And instead we have somebody who probably, I'm wondering, do they actually have a fully fledged campaign? In terms of what they want to sell to the region, because they weren't planning on it, right? You didn't have to put together a campaign, a campaign, because nobody else was running versus Gary Carr, who comes in and just says, I'm not her, vote for me.
Yeah. Safe pair of hands and hold them. Yeah.
Right. I'm the guy, I'm the guy who's been there for the last, you know, fifteen years or so. Yo, give me, I want the job again. And that just says something about our politics where, you know, we'd have people not, like, we're just, we have a lack of good debate. I, I've seen like the last provincial election, I know I feel tired of it, but you know, we had a, just a poor lack of actual ideas and debates about how people are, what people need to make their lives better.
And if Jane McKenna wants to win, she has to have ideas for the first time in her life, you know? She's not hanging on the coattails of, of her party leader. Yeah.
She's, she's on her own.
Yeah. I'm, you know, I.
She is. She's, she's on her own.
She is on her own for the first time and I, she's going to come up short unless I'm very much surprised, because I have seen no evidence over the last ten, twelve years, however long it is, that Jane McKenna has ever had an original idea of her own or, or any great insight about anything. And I hate to be so kind of brittle about it, but, but, but it's just the case.
Here's the challenge. Prove, Jane, prove them wrong.
Yeah. I mean, she wants to win. She has to give people a reason to choose something different. And that's very difficult at municipal level at any time. It's extremely level with the, difficult at the regional level. And, you know, unless Jane McKenna has been hiding her gifts under a bushel extremely well for, for a decade. You know.
Well, we'll wait and see.
Yeah. Well, she's had a few months already that she could have been out there and I haven't seen anything. So.
All right. Let's move on to our final chat for the night, for the day. Peel, more specifically the Duffin Peel School Board is in a bit of a rebellion apparently over de-streaming their, their, their academic streams.
Yeah. I mean, this is, this is another story from, this is a story from the Pointer, which is, does, you know, is a website. It does a lot of reporting on Brampton and Miss Saga, especially Brampton. And Peel District School Board, I'm not sure that there's any district school board in the whole province, certainly not in the nine oh five that has covered itself in glory in recent years. But Peel is another school board that seems pretty dysfunctional. It, you know, the, the ministry has stepped in at various points to basically bring them back into line to kind of take over. And, um, the, the issue at the moment is the phasing out of streaming, which for anybody who, wow, I guess so. We've all been at school at some point, so you probably know what streaming is. But the idea of putting people into different classes or based on judgments of academic ability, whether someone is more suited for an academic career or more suited for, I don't know what the word is, vocational or, or non-academic anyway. And it's been shown time and time again that this, this, this will, this has all kinds of negative effects. It is very open to intentional or unintentional biases and racism that will count against people from less, less economically fortunate backgrounds.
Let's be honest here. It's a program that you're streaming is supposed to be, you enter into high school and by the time you're, by the age of 14, you're expected to be able to plan ahead exactly what your career will be. And you go into either an academically inclined stream of education where the idea is you will graduate from high school and go on to get a degree from a lovely Ontario university and become a thinker and professional and earn all sorts of money at being a liberal elite. Or you go into a general, as you said, vocational stream where the idea is, no, you can't cut it. You're supposed to go into the trades and, because you, you're quite frankly, you're not smart enough. So you will go and become a, a tradesperson and you'll go work for those lovely rich people in academia. Fix their toilets and installing their light fixtures. That's the, that's the general idea. Where it's come into is that it's, the evidence is overwhelming overwhelmingly there that racialized students are put into the less glamorous stream for no other reason than, well, the color of their skin. Let's be, let's be blunt about it. So I, I think it's a good idea that we're de-streaming. And again, credit where it's due, let's give credit to Stephen Litchey for, for pushing this through and de-streaming our, our education system, because I for the life of me do not understand the purpose of it. Like who at the age of 14, 15 will predict, oh, this is exactly how I'm going to live my life for until the, the day I retire?
Oh, I mean, and I guess there's that, there's that assumption that if you put less academically gifted children in the same class as academically gifted children, the less academically gifted will drag down the gifted, you know, that, that is the, that is the hypothesis that may, many people, I think, take as fact. Now, there's been a ton of research done on this over decades and decades and decades. And, and we are told by the people who do the research that that is not actually what the outcome is. The outcome of streaming, and this I can certainly speak to, and we were, we were chatting before we came on. I think we can both speak to it with a certain amount of personal experiences that the streaming can literally divide families. And, and it comes with a very strong stigma of success and failure on young children who, who, you know, at, at a young age, 14 here. Are basically told, well, you're not, yeah, you're not good enough. You can't go with bright kids. Now, I knew I wasn't, you know, when I was at school, I was very bad at math, like abysmally bad at math. And I, you know, I knew I was never going to be the, the smartest kid, but to kind of, to stream you in that way where you're, you're, you're kind of, you're judged and, and found wanting at a particular, rather given that flexibility of, you know, you can, depending on how hard you work and doing, you can, you can still, you know, you can still get to university, you know? And, you know, actually, I mean, just my experience with streaming in Britain, which is, which happens even younger. And where I grew up, literally they would send you to a different school, depending on whether you're on your, depending on that judgment that was made at that age. You know, as, as a white, kind of middle, middle class ish child, I was very fortunate enough to have parents who could kind of play the system and get me into the good school through hiring tutors, through, and, and actually just from the fact that I was the youngest of, of four meant that they, they'd learnt how to game things by the time they got to me. But so I survived, but I mean, that, that, that proves the point that.
But that's, that's what happens here. It's the white families are able to afford tutors and after school assistance to help their kids go through that. I can, I think the whole system is just flawed, because the, I think when most people, like just cursory, like you think of the Canadian education system. The idea is all these kids in a school, you learn together, you, you go to the sports together, you, you grow up together. And then you graduate and you go off to wherever, you go off to university and you go off to, to college and you, you whatever, you find, you find yourself thin. The, the idea of this streaming, which is the notion of, oh, well, by the time you're 14, we're pretty much going to pick out your life for you is such a, it, it tells me just how out of date our education system is with the realities of the 21st century. The, if you, because if you think about the mentality of it, the, the philosophy of it is you're going to only have one job or one career for your entire life. The idea is you're going to, if you don't make it in academic, the academic stream, you're going to go out, you're going to become a tradesperson. You're going to become a plumber or an electrician or a carpenter or, or a, uh, something. And you're going to do that for life. Same as, oh, you're going to go into academia, you're going to become a, get a degree in math or science or, or history or English, whatever. And you're going to do that for life. You and I both know that is not the case. Anybody listening to this podcast will know that is not the case in, in the reality. You go through a variety of different careers. You're constantly going back to school to re, retrain, finish up a degree, broaden your, your, your skillset. Whatever the case may be, tools change by the time you get into your, your middle age. And, but our school system is still geared towards this idea of, oh, you're only going to have one job and you're going to have to learn to do that. And the idea is at the age of 14, we're going to train you to do that, which is why, again, I'm rambling a bit here and I'm getting definitely off topic, but bear with me. Which is why you hear from like an university level professor saying, kids graduating from Ontario University, or Ontario High Schools are not equipped for the rigors of university. And you have to wonder about that, because our high schools, like our education system isn't geared towards. And you have to wonder about that because our high schools, like our education system, isn't geared towards, you think, independently, you think on your own. It's no, we train you to put the, the bolt in the door, bolt in the, in the wheel and work on the assembly line. That is its mentality, that is how it is structured.
I, yeah, I don't want to put that too strongly because I suspect, you know, these are things which have been, are in the process of being phased out. I've been phased out for a long time. And, you know, you also have to say that, you know, we're, we're frequently told by, again, by multiple governments that, that Ontario schools hold up very well against schools anywhere in other places in the world. So, I mean, I don't know, either the, I, I don't believe they're completely making that up. I think we have a fairly decent school system, could be better, absolutely. There's no doubt about that. And, and, you know, politics tends to not help when it gets involved, you know, and this is what we're dealing with here. I mean, getting back to, to the Peel School Board.
Yep.
Again, no, no, well, I was wandering off topic earlier. The, again, we have a bunch of school trustees who probably are not the smartest students themselves, quite frankly. Or if they were, that, that part of their brain has departed some years ago. Sticking their oars in, thinking they know better than, than the people who work at the Education Ministry, who, you know, the, the apolitical, non-political, the researchers, that the people who actually look into this stuff and say, well, this, this, this is how this should be done. The school trustees have no business sticking their oar into it. If the ministry says do X, you have to do X. Even under a government that I do not like, they have the right to do that. The trustees do not. And again, it comes back, you know.
Well, I, I look at it, I look at our, our coverage of school board trustees on this podcast. We haven't talked too much about the different Peel School Board, but we have talked about the Hamilton as well as the, definitely the Holton Catholic School Boards. I've come to the conclusion on, on this matter that school boards in general are completely useless and need to be abolished in this province.
Electoral school boards, yeah.
I mean, I really don't, I really don't. Yeah, the elected, like the trustees, the elected trustees part are completely useless and need to be abolished. You can have an administration that handles the financial aspect of making sure that, you know, schools get a fresh coat of paint and, and, and science equipment is, you know, is, is working and all that. But aside from that, I don't see why we need elected school boards. They, they are completely useless, in my opinion, in this modern age.
Yeah, and, you know, they don't, they attract two types of people. One, people who just get off on being elected to something and basically being elected to the lowest level you can be elected to. And, and those people who are hoping for a, a political career further up the ladder. And there are good trustees, don't get me wrong, there are good trustees. However, you cannot prove to me that they're actually doing anything particularly necessary. And, and you look at the things in this province that are done by, by boards and committees that are not elected, Police Services Board, for instance. I mean, it, it's incredible. I mean, it's a much better case for Police Services Board being elected than, than the damn school boards. And, you know, they only get in the news when they're doing something dreadful. And we've seen plenty of evidence of dreadfulness in the last couple of years. And, I mean, ultimately, it's, 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 I mean, I, I fear that the municipalities are going in the same direction. But basically trustees do not have any power of any great significance. I mean, they sign off on the budget, that is the only you will drop. And they get to pick a name for any damn new schools. I mean, how pathetic.
What do you do?
Yeah, we do not need to elect a bunch of no-hopers to, sorry, Joe, you ran for that.
I, I ran and I, I said this before, looking back on my loss was the greatest victory of my life. Because I, I look at it like, I don't see, I just, I just don't see any purpose to it. It's like the, the staff or staff of school boards are able to facilitate the funds to where it needs to go. The fact that you have these trustees that want to nitpick and throw cogs in the machine and whatnot, because they can. It does a disservice to our education system. They, they're, they're more of an, they're more of an impediment than oversight. And here's the thing, if there is oversight, if there's an issue with a school, if there's an issue with the, the, the funding of a school, guess what? It's going to the Minister of Education. Nobody, nobody knows who their trustee is. If you, if you have an issue with, oh, my school doesn't have enough, you know, it, the roof's caving in. You're calling up the Ministry of Education to say, fix my school. So.
And the whole pride and pride flag issue is only an issue because the, because the ministry didn't want to get involved. And they didn't want to let, lay down the law for fear that they might be the ones who catch the flag. So they'd leave it to the trustees and the trustees, I say, there are many good trustees, but there are also trustees who, in the Catholic school boards, are there because they are religious bigots. And they're, they're there to promote themselves, to do whatever they need to do to keep the family life coalition people happy, whatever. Yeah, it, yeah, it brings us holding in dispute. And again, if I compare, Britain has a Catholic, state-run Catholic schools very much like Canada does, like Ontario does. I don't remember them, it may have changed in the last twenty years, of course, but I don't remember at any point Catholic schools ever being a controversial issue in Britain. Because there's not a bunch of elected people sticking their oar in.
Right.
On religious issues, to self-promote or to just, you know, whatever it is that they think they're doing.
No, we just, we need to get rid of school boards in general so that we can, you know, in this case, that the Ministry of, Minister of Education and the Ministry of Education do the right thing and this, this policy of streaming in our publicly funded schools. So the idea is that kids can learn together equally and, you know, grow, grow and become, and then have the rest of their lives to figure out what, what is it they want to become, not to be decided upon them at the age of fourteen.
I mean, these are all issues I do not see. You know, we just had an election and the things that we've talked about repeatedly, we've repeatedly talked about how bad school trustees are. We've talked about, you know, the, you know, municipal government being overridden to a degree that, that is out of step with public perception of municipal powers, let's put it that way. You know, so many things we talked about again and again, again, they weren't talked about at the election, you know, I mean, sure, housing was. But, but, yeah, I mean, like, these, these big issues with education are, are not talked about, but they will talk about, you know, well, in two thousand eighteen, we had the whole, you know, sex ed thing and, you know, things that just aren't important at all.
Well, I think on that note, let's bring this episode to a close, because I see our time is running short. So thank you very much, everyone, for listening. And a reminder, we are off for the majority, majority of the summer. We'll be back in time for this fall's municipal election to hopefully talk about the riveting and controversial stories that will emerge as the, as the, as the election approaches. So thanks, everyone. Take care and we'll talk to you soon. Bye-bye.
Bye.
That's it for this episode of the nine oh fiver. Thank you for listening. As always, you can send us your feedback, thoughts and concerns or ideas for future episodes to our email, info@nineofiver.ca. We'd love to hear from you. You can help us keep the nine oh fiver going by financially supporting us through Patreon as well as PayPal. Visit us at nineofiver.ca and click on the support tab. As well, links are in the show notes for your convenience. Lastly, you can find us on social media, search for the underscore nine oh fiver on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram and LinkedIn. So long for now. See you next time.